Kevin Arnett.
Here.
Kathy Hott, Harry, Charlie Gilmore.
Here.
James Arnett.
Here.
Howard Smith.
Here.
Zachary Davis.
Here.
Number three, both attendants on the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-two. There anybody sign that to get?
Oh.
Or is that?
There's not a sign of she.
There's not, okay.
Just, um.
Something here. Here it goes.
I have a few questions, I'll have to look in a room. That was asked. Okay. Do we have anyone employed with the City of Alaska capable of writing a grant?
Yes.
Okay. Why do we have zero proposed grant income for this year? On this budget?
Cause there's nothing in the works at the moment.
So we have no grant?
No, we just finished up three of them.
But that could be proposed, so shouldn't it be on the budget?
Yeah, it'll take a couple of years. If we apply for grants now, we're looking for three years.
I'm saying, so if the admin expense is fifty-three hundred for economic development and the expenditure for economic development is zero, why do we have an admin expense for it?
Well, the economic development is the group that for Pope County Economic Development, we spend five thousand dollars on that. What is the other, I don't know where the other one is.
What line out of our home?
The expenditure at the end for economic development says zero.
Oh, that's, okay, that is out of capital outlay. And so because we're not doing a feasibility study or anything this year, that's where that would come out, cause they're larger expenses. So we didn't budget to do a feasibility study for this year.
We did last year.
A couple of years ago, we did. Ms. Davidson. Yes ma'am? So, just to expand, whenever we apply for these grants with TDA or GLO, they require that we have a grants administrator. So that's when we go in, we put requests for proposals and stuff. But we do the original, like the initial application. And I've done several, I have four in the works right now. We have the DDRP, I don't know all of them, there's several of them. I've got four applications out right now that I'm waiting to be invited to apply because they've changed how they do things. You can't just, so our score is really high.
So you're in like the phase two or three.
Right, so we're, we're in, we're kinda in limbo right now until we get invited to apply, which we expect invitations between November and January.
Yes.
So once that gets underway, we'll be able to move forward and you'll see some progress and we can start talking numbers and different things. But I've applied for two five-hundred thousand dollar grants, a seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar grant and a six-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar grant. And all of them are for street drainage improvements.
Okay, I guess to expand on that, is there a reason why there was, if there's like, I guess not an overlap from, why wasn't it done sooner? Like, why are we not applying for these grants on our own if we had a grant administrator?
We are applying for them as they come available, it's just that you, we don't always score high. You know, it, it's competitive.
Last one they dismissed because of the income of the households.
Mine, I know it's competitive, like, I understand it, I've been in county government for over thirteen years, like, I've worked in commissioners for it, like, I understand.
It's an ongoing, every time one opens up, we apply. We, we do the, cause it's just changed a little bit. Usually we'd have to get permission from council to apply and start the application process that way. We can't even start the application process until we're invited to apply.
So we just have grants out for roads, that's all just for grants for roads, nothing else?
Right now, that's the ones that I have submitted because those were, the drainage issues were something that, the mitigation was a, was a big variable. To make it, we're trying to get approved, so we're trying to focus on what they're approved in. And drainage improvements and street improvements is one of the things. We're looking at a USDA grant for hopefully if future planning, but.
No, I understand, like, I'm just talking about like, well, unfortunate fire, Texas Parks a lot, I mean, outside of roads.
Outside of roads, we are just, well, all of the fire chiefs.
Okay.
He's got a hundred thousand dollar grant in the works, possibly gonna get funded. Police Department's finished up their few grants from a couple of years ago, they're going to fly September first. Anything?
They open, they're not open right now.
Yeah.
But nothing was done prior is what I'm saying, like, I'm not saying anything about the current administration, I'm saying like, why are we not having grant income this year from what we've applied for five years ago?
We do, we have six-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars of grant income coming in this fiscal year. We're trying to close it out by September thirty. Not in the next year budget, that's why there's zero, other than the FEMA reimbursement, which we put, we added that in there under, it's not really grant, it's a reimbursement.
I have a question about the de minimis tax rate. That is used to not have a vote on this increase in our property taxes. The de minimis is that it's a sum of the new revenue maintenance and operations tax rate plus the debt rate of this year. The debt rate this year, uninformation, is zero. What we have on the handout on the cover handles a debt debt rate of twenty-five, twenty-six, so that's not the current. Current on the list is zero.
We have no bonded debt.
No.
And we are not, we're not using the de minimis rate.
We could use it in the minutes rate, but we're not.
The de minimis rate sounds like that's what's used to not vote on the taxes.
Um, hold on just a second, the de minimis rate is actually much higher.
Point four-two.
Which point four, yes.
Four-two.
Yes.
But that comes from using a number that is in the current here, in the budget. It says the de minimis is a sum of the no new revenue maintenance operations, which is two-one-nine, plus the current debt rate, which is twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-four, twenty-five, which is probably current, or am I misreading it, it says current. That's it, what was supposed to be in the paper.
Some of this tax rate calculation is a bit confusing to me.
Right.
I mean, I know how to, I know the formulas and stuff based off of what Chad gives us. What we get with, or what council is wanting to go with.
At least talk to the minimums for it, it's not.
Yes, what's a special taxing unit?
That's the tax rate.
Like, the current debt rate, the current debt rate, twenty-four, twenty-five, which are ten, so.
Yeah, the, it's point four-two-eight.
Right.
Okay, so the minimums developing the, the sum of the one.
Oh, that did, I let it, let it do it.
So I can, I can make a copy of this if you'd like. This is a worksheet that Laura had given me from the, for Tatum to use, actually to get Tatum access to find this worksheet. And this gives us the breakdown of what everything is. So Tatum has to calculate our tax rates for us.
Okay. And I'm reading on here.
We have no bonded debt.
But, okay, but what I made the minimums actually is equal to the sum of no new maintenance, unoperations, which is one, which is one line on that. And then, it's also. And the current debt rate.
Well, the budget has to support the, I'm sorry, the tax rate has to support the budget. And so that's what we've done, is we have calculated a rate that supports our budget.
And the de minimis rate is what is used to determine whether or not we have a vote, is that right?
No, sir, you, okay, so if you, if you go to the de minimis rate, it doesn't automatically trigger an election. But you would have the opportunity to petition.
Right.
So anything above, so the rate that, that council's proposing is the highest rate. So exceeding this rate would allow the voters to petition. So this is the, the highest rate that the council could approve.
Right.
That doesn't allow a petition.
What's the, what's the company for vote?
Council is proposing point-two-four-eight-nine-seven-one.
Okay, but that would require a vote.
No.
Why not?
No, because it, it's still less than the percentage that we're allowed to increase.
Which is the de minimis rate?
It's way less than the de minimis rate.
Right.
And it does not, anything above this rate would, would be what could be petitioned.
Okay.
This is section two-six oh-seven-five of the tax code.
Where does her de minimis rate come from, cause it doesn't agree with what's in, what's in the notice. Unless I'm mistaken, the current debt rate of the City of Alaska is zero.
We have no bonded debt, we have, our debt, we have to cover our budget.
Okay.
I don't have a good answer for you right now, I can, I can get back with you on that.
Let me see, what should I, what should I put right there?
It's a, this is just a sheet out of her worksheet, workbook. I have the whole, the tax calculation worksheets are posted on our website, they give you the entire breakdown. And you can go through all those worksheets.
The notice you put up here is very simplified.
Yes.
And it looks like we don't, we don't limit to the de minimis rate, this is not point-four, but if you use zero, that's what the.
Right, but we're not, and we're not doing the point-four.
Okay.
Point-four is not.
That's the cutoff, that's the cutoff is what I have to say.
Right, that would, okay, if we went to the de minimis rate, that would be the highest you could go without automatically triggering an election.
Right.
But anything above what we, what, what council is proposing, anything above that, the voters could petition.
Right.
For an election in November.
Right, so we gone above that amount, but below the de minimis?
We, we've not gone above the amount for a petition.
Right.
We're at the, we're at the, that, that, that rate. We're below the de minimis, we're below, we're below the rate to automatically, or to allow for a petition.
Okay. Which is what, which is what allows for a petition?
Anything above point-two-four-eight-nine-seven-one. So exceeding that rate, it will allow the ability to petition for an election. Anything, anything exceeding point-two-four-eight-nine-seven-one.
I thought it would be, it would be revenue tax rate.
No, this is, our proposed rate is up here.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Hmm?
So, um, the budget for this year for animal control expenses was ten thousand dollars. And the budget for next year is five thousand dollars for animal control, so how is that gonna work?
We haven't been using it years past, the chief has an agreement with the sheriff's office, if we pick anything up, we take it to Pope County Shelter. And then we pay for that.
So that's only gonna be five thousand instead of ten thousand?
Yes.
We don't, we don't, the county doesn't pick up sherries and we don't go to sherries. So it's only for special situations.
Nobody enforces anything about the animal licensing at this point?
Animal licensing.
Dog licensing.
Like you have to have a license for your animals here at this time?
For the, you talking about the?
Code.
Code enforcement?
Yes, the enforcer. Any other questions?
Where, where has the tax increase gone, put it out there like that? One of them is, and you should be able to find, and point to something where the, where the public tax has gone to, that's been the last two years. What has that been, what has gone to? We're having problems with the streets and apparently there hasn't been an agreement made that is saying it's in effect as far as cost sharing of some sort with the subdivisions, is that true?
We've been talking to Pat Casey quite a bit, we've been talking to Pat Casey quite a bit.
Right, I mean, any of the subdivisions, you get Canyon Park.
It's against the law to have a cost share nowadays.
So what we had with the county and what we thought we were gonna get with the city is probably not gonna happen. That kind of agreement.
When it comes to cost share.
Cost share, yeah, we cannot force a subdivision to pay for a work, that's city about.
So, but, so, so there won't be the agreement, there can't be the agreement like we had with county? Where we paid for, what was it, labor?
Yeah. Material.
Okay, that's now, not gonna be allowed at all.
If you get, A can make a donation. Yeah. Yeah, the city attorney can draw up a agreement.
We're talking with the attorney about it, especially if it's not on our plan to do certain work. Obviously Twin Harbors has pretty good roads and there's still dirt roads that we're trying to address.
Right, I understand that.
And if, if you have the money to do the road and you wish to bump it up on the schedule and the county has time, then there should be a way that allows you to do that, especially if we don't have the funds to do that at the current time. So we're, we don't know how.
Yeah, you have to set an agreement for some.
So if we have funds, we can't, you know, have a cost sharing, as we had before, we can't allocate roads which we consider to be substandard for our neighborhood. And I understand that there's other ones in the Alaska area that are way, way below what we have. But roads in our area, we hope to have in better shape than the general ones in Alaska. So, I guess what I'm seeing, is if, if we, if we connect, if we have a collection or we have our residents pay to a road fund that's for our roads, right now we can't go down Alaska and have it done.
While we're still waiting on that agreement from a lawyer to draw up, cause that's the last conversation we've had.
So we, what he, so we can use those funds and pay half as much as we would if we were working with the city. That's basically how it turned out before, fifty-fifty, is usually a general amount, so.
Yeah, that used to be the standard.
Right, okay.
So, so when we went to the county where they were abandoning our roads, they made it sound like they were gonna have an MOU or something with you guys to still work that out, so have they not done that?
Yeah, we have a MOU in place.
With the county?
Mm-hmm, we've had one since the city's been in session.
No, but I mean, you know, they just, they just told us they weren't gonna do it anymore.
Right, but it has to come through the city at this point.
And so is that being the law for us?
Oh, yes, ours are not.
Y'all submit work orders to the county to, for them to help out?
We do, we do, yes, we, but.
But then you're up to the county to when they get to it?
County.
Our hands are tied, tied just like y'all were, when y'all would go to the county and say, hey, we're ready to get this road done, he's Ronnie or whoever, Mark would say, it's gonna be the next fiscal year, so.
So y'all got a road plan?
Yes.
You gonna publish it on the website? Yeah. It'd be nice.
Yeah, but we're. He's done it in my.
More communication is better than less. Then we don't have to come up here and piss me off. Pat has a pretty detailed plan. That'd be good. He had charity with y'all, he represent y'all.
Uh, we worry about our road plan, we worry about the city's road plan, uh, now we're on road plan.
Into the road plan, like, cause I know we have some detrimental roads that are scary.
Well, and we still have some roads that don't have anything that we need to bring up to spec, so that's our road plan. But we don't know when our roads are on your road plan in the future.
The ones that are already paved and have to spec.
Adopted.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So it's in their, in their road god, in Pat God?
Yeah, that's, that's who's been.
No, his is for our subdivision, we just.
But they, one of those, but they were talking about the city, oh, I thought they were talking about theirs.
No, 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 no.
They're like, what, oh, do, yeah, well, we made that public pretty much. Talked to, it's in our.
I've got this, but it's not on the website though.
No.
Yeah, put it there.
So if the future is, is Alaska got any plans on providing services to the residents like sewer, water, trash, anything other than police department and fire department, through the city?
Through the city, we've looked at taking over the sewer company, but that's a process in itself. Trash business, and it costs you for one truck, close to half a million dollars, plus you put people on payroll, we pay their insurance, you pay the truck insurance and stuff, so. It's a lot of money upfront.
Is there any plan in the future of consistent revenue? To do that, to gain consistent revenue for the city? Are we just status quo on the way it is and?
No, we, we had been, council had discussed, take, build a trash service and things like that.
Or the water department?
Or the water.
You know, the services that are usually provided by the city to the residents.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have, we, we pay like subcontractors, subcontractors for our utilities. Is it going through the city for the city to obtain some revenue?
And you take on the liability also, the way the city was said earlier was co-ops throughout the years, and we inherited co-ops.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the, you know, the, the water, the sewer, and the trash.
The problem is, unfortunately, is it's not just one water company, there are currently how many?
There's, there's nine in our area, not necessarily in our city, we have a, well, I count Yopon Cove, cause we do have.
So like, Yopon Cove has their own water company, Canyon Park has their own, there's Lake Livingston Water Inn in Paula Woods, there's Alaska Water and Gas that goes well beyond the city limits, so.
What about the trash?
Ma'am?
What about the trash, inside the city limits, one trash truck, one guy, I mean.
Yeah, that, that's really, I, I've, I've talked to other cities about that, really.
Well, most of the cities are now contracting them out, they don't even do it anymore.
But it goes through the city.
It goes through the city, you take the city.
We'd be a billing man at that point, we would have to have not just a trash truck, you, then you gotta get a receptionist and a billing department to bill it.
But you get the money upfront from the citizens, so you get the money upfront from your citizens, so we would pay you money.
Right.
Now, like, now you have an option, you have an option to use the trash service or not use the trash service. If we done it, you would be made to do it, be made to work.
And there's a lot of.
Inside the limits.
Yeah, and there's a lot of people are strapped for cash, especially our people that are retired, that only have a bag or two a week, and they'd rather go spend five dollars at the county collection versus forcing them to pay twenty-five or thirty dollars a month.
But I don't wanna pay higher taxes either if I have to.
We have to get in building, we have to get maintenance, we have to get people, we have to get trucks.
I'm not against it, I just feel like we're there yet.
No, no, I'm just saying, that's what she was asking, is there a plan?
Well, that'd be lovely if we could do it all ourselves, that would be great, but.
And I'm not saying that we need to have a trash service here local, but I'm saying, if, say Lone Star, the city contracts with Lone Star, Lone Star charges fifteen dollars, twenty dollars, I don't know what they charge, for every can. The city charges the residents twenty-five dollars, that's five dollars revenue for the city.
So right now.
You pay Lone Star, the residents pay the city.
So right now, we don't have to do the trucks, we don't have to do the pickup, we don't have to do the personnel, we don't have to do the entrance, and we're gonna charge fees for them.
I, I.
So we are getting money.
No, I understand you're getting money, I'm just saying you could be making bigger revenue or consistent revenue for a city is a utility trash sewer. I've, I've lived in multiple cities in the States and I always think of the.
If there's enough citizens, afford that.
Well, there again, is, is there a plan?
Gotta have enough citizens that are paying.
Is there a plan to put forth to the citizens on how this would help reduce or keep our taxes everywhere? So where every pay, everybody pays a little bit.
But they're all already the lowest in the county, taking a look at the tax rates. Most cities are getting out of, most of the trash business and everything else.
So basically, there's no plan in the future to increase city services?
Not at the moment, council hadn't decided on anything.
No, but I get where she's coming from, she's just trying to figure out what's the other stream of income for, that is a great conversation.
Something.
That is discussed, but I mean, there's a way more to that. And for somebody that doesn't live here in the city, who's been in the county for thirteen years, I can tell you that there's a lot of houses, there's not a lot of people that are living there full-time, you know, there's not a lot of people that are gonna be paying that multi-service, cause these are vacation homes, these are Airbnb homes, these are people that, you know, aren't, aren't gonna be part of them, so unfortunately for Pope County, and until there's like some kind of major economic boost here that we've been hoping for, for thirteen years since I've been here, and it hasn't happened.
That's my next, that's my next question, is there a plan or is there some, somehow that we can get revenue or generate some type of businesses other, other than gas stations or tobacco shops or?
Liquor stores?
Thank you, that is, I mean, I really, I really. But I mean, the kids to have a job would cut down their crime. If the kids have an opportunity to go to work, I have a fifteen-year-old, she can't work anywhere, nobody's gonna hire her because no, a vape shop, a liquor store, a convenience store, or, or a server, she can't do any of that. Like, she has no options here to go to work someplace. So I believe that our crime rate, at least in the juvenile portion and maybe in the young adult, would minimize if we had economic development where we had jobs.
And it's very taxing to bring them in, because when they do the demographics, your labor pool is lacking. You, you go out and you beg people to come to work because you're talking about a, a entry-level job for a fifteen-year-old. How do you, how do you get them to wanna come to work?
Well, I mean.
I mean, there's.
Most kids that want to work, go to work.
Right, I, I've got five, and I've got two of them that go wash dishes at one of our local establishments every weekend.
No, I've got two, I've got two college students that have full-time jobs at sixteen.
Yeah.
But they lost some to school, so I mean, and, and if they want to work, they will, but there's no opportunity for them to work, if my.
But bringing in, the negotiations to bring in a corporate store, no matter what it is, took well over a year, and they run all the numbers, and they were hesitant because of the labor pool.
Absolutely.
So how do we?
They did their studies before they.
Well, yeah, they even get here, so.
Another way to increase your labor pool with your young people especially is provide a community center to where they can be mentored on good work ethic, ethics, and how to be, um, a productive citizen, instead of just somebody sitting around playing video games.
There's literally nothing that appreciates.
We don't have any, any community center for the kids.
I bet it's ninety-one, I graduated ninety-six, is that way then?
It don't matter, it's twenty twenty-five.
This is a rural area that is not very attractive to dig this.
Sir, Midland, Augusta is a very rural.
Midland's way bigger than us.
It's a very rural area, is what I said.
Okay, but the population's way more than us.
We can drive an hour to go to Houston and do this, so I understand that.
But North City, Texas is small, North City, Texas is a small town, but it has a community center, and it has activities for, for the young kids.
That's the.
We don't.
Everything you've said, everybody's talked about for the last twenty, thirty years.
I've been on it.
There's, and they, there's USDA grants that we are heavily looking at for one of those, but you, it takes time and you've gotta score correctly.
I think there's enough citizens in a city that could pull together to make some.
See, that's the thing, did you hear what you just said?
Oh, I can, believe me, I know.
Pull together, said pull.
The firefighters do, we need to do the same thing for the police, we need to do the same thing for the.
We'd all work together, and if you have ideals, we'll certainly, you know, I'm just one-fifth of this board.
Oh, I know.
And I, you know, I have, just like everybody else, I have a nine to five, and it's, it's a lot, it's a lot. And sometimes my brain don't think of outside my little box, and I would love, love for people to work together and.
There's no reason to grant something.
And sometimes I would love to have a meeting after a meeting, because all my answers pop up in my head or solutions to things we discuss.
At the pocket night.
And that doesn't get to happen.
Is there a possibility, is there a possibility the city would, would foster or at least encourage a citizens planning committee to make regulations to the city for possible future as a citizens' board? No authority, just a citizen advisory.
Like, it's just a brain, like, to brainstorm like, this is where they wanna go, this is where, this is, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, I do too, absolutely.
Is there any budget questions? Any questions? Have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion?
Number three, public, if you put on, how's tax rate fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, I'm not giving, I answer.
No questions on the picture?
I can answer here.
Are there no questions? Don't. What's that? You can edit this right here.
No, I know, I'm looking in here. I believe each question's gonna be answered in this, but it's actually.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah. But how is that to load, and this tells everyone how to load. Is it a Bible on the list?
Yeah. Are there no questions, make a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion?
That's right here.
Get back.
This is right on the left side.